It is six thirty PM and I call this meeting to order. Prior to reciting the pledge, I'd like to introduce our distinguished guest, Matthew Baumgartner, who's the City of Winona's honorary mayor for the day. Matthew won an essay contest sponsored by Park and Rec Department titled If I Was Mayor For The Day. Matthew just finished his seventh grade year at Carter Schools. He's the son of Jesse and Peggy and has one sister Megan. Matthew's essay will be on display at the Winona Public Library and will be printed in the Winona Post. Matthew, congratulations on being Winona's first mayor of the day. Matthew, will you please read your essay?
If I could pick the day I was mayor of Winona, I would choose the day in early June when Winona features Tri-Nona. It was a day when individuals tall and small, athletic or not, come together to try something hard and to support one another. They inspire others to be the next generation of triathlon. I received my first medal, finisher's medal for my first triathlon when I was four years old. I have loved the sport ever since and it's taught me to do hard things and to work towards a goal bigger than myself. Tri-Nona is an opportunity for our community to come together and inspire others to do our very best. As mayor, I would give all kids of Winona the chance to race in Tri-Nona. It would give, it would give kids the need, I would give kids in need the opportunity to race for a free entry and ask access to bikes or gear so that everyone could participate. I would include special needs and para-athletes division and apparent and child race. If they could have the feeling of crossing that finish line, maybe they would learn to believe in themselves and to learn to set higher goals. Just like I have. If I was mayor, I would highlight the community during Tri-Nona. It would be an opportunity to recognize our amazing community leaders, the police department, the police and fire department, individuals and group volunteers, supporting businesses and inspiring athletes. These groups are some of the true beauties of Winona, along with the beauties of the bluff, the glistening lake of Winona, the safe bike pass, beautiful lake park, and my day as mayor would be epic. Thank you.
Matthew, thank you for that. That obviously hits close to home. Some of the things that resonate through your essay are some things that I take seriously. I truly believe that physical activity is not only good for the heart and the lungs, but it's also good for the mind. It helps you get outside, it helps you clear your mind, and it helps some of the worries of the world kind of wash away. Also, setting goals is extremely important. Being able to look forward can also help you make sure that not only are you working towards that goal, but also again, it helps wash away some of the other things that seem important at that moment, but really aren't that big of a deal when you look at the long-term picture. The last thing that you talk about there is empowerment. And empowerment is extremely important for a variety of reasons, but I was at a meeting a few months ago and one of the things that, that I came up with was what if empowerment was a human right? If you think about that for a minute, that is something that we don't always look at. We don't look at the ability to empower someone. And as mayor, I have that power sometimes and I try to take that opportunity whenever I can. Matthew, I hope that you do the same throughout your life. So, thank you for that. I appreciate it. I'd like to invite his family up to the front here and we'll take some photos real quick. Go ahead and come around the back of the table here and I'll present a certificate of appreciation to Matthew for this. Thank you. All right, you're ready? We're gonna start this thing. Matthew, we're gonna stand. Will you please start us in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance? Okay, this evening I have got, I believe, only one item under mayor's comments. It's regarding our finance department. The Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada has awarded the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting to the City of Winona for its annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ended in December thirty-one, two thousand and twenty. The report has been judged by an impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program, which includes demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure, to clearly communicate its financial story and motivate potential users and user groups to read the report. The Certificate of Achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting. And its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. I'd ask the finance department, come up and I'll present the certificate. Do have one more comment real quick. Last meeting, we had spoken about initiating a mayor's task force. We had recently disbanded the Finance Commission. We will be creating a task force to re-envision what we will call the Winona Creative Commission. The members of that task force are, let me find it real quick. Margaret Shaw Johnson, Darryl Lance, Colleen Woolner, Kerry Frederick, Caitlin McCoy, Scott Pollock, Sarah Johnson, Eric, and I'm gonna slaughter his last name. Hochschoven, yes, thank you. And Kristen Young. They will be working and we hope to have something done by the end of the summer here. And they will be basing their work off of the Winona Arts and Culture Strategic Plan that was recently completed. So, with that, city manager Chad Hubel, your comments.
Mayor, I'll ask the honorary mayor if he has any comments before I go to mine, if that's okay?
Absolutely, please do.
And student, council members, I will be participating in Tri-Nona this weekend. I would like to wish all the participants a safe and complete race. I would, I would like to thank all those who have made this race possible, including the city staff and parks, public workers and police departments.
Thanks, Matthew.
Okay, mayor and council, we have a few retirements that we would like to acknowledge tonight. And after I read the script, mayor, if you'd be okay to go, I guess, toward the podium and greet the retirees of their certificate. So, we're gonna start with senior mechanic Mark Olson. Senior mechanic Mark Olson will retire on June seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two after fifteen years of service. Mark began employment with the city on August seventh, two thousand and six. He has a brilliant mind for fixing just about anything from a weed whipper to the often finicky Zamboni. During his tenure, Mark was tasked to work on every part of large, heavy-duty vehicles from bumper to bumper, including fire trucks, dump trucks, street sweepers, sewer vector, and sling trucks, tractors, large mowers, bobcats, Cushman, and other off-road utility vehicles. He's repaired and replaced various transmissions, fuel pumps, engines, and hydraulics. He's capable of fabricating parts to repair vehicles that you may never see. His handiwork is found across the city's two-hundred-plus fleet of vehicles and equipment. In addition to his ability to fix things, he also provided training for new staff that were in the process of obtaining their commercial driver's license. Mark was a certified in-house instructor and would train employees on pre-trip inspections and conduct behind-the-wheel training for them for practice road tests. Marco, as he's known to all city staff, is best known for his quick-witted comebacks. With Marco, there's never a dull moment, as he is always able to put a fun spin on every situation and problem that he handled. Marco will be missed not only by central garage staff, but all city departments, as he could not only fix their problems, but they never left the shop without a laugh as well. On behalf of the entire city staff and Winona community, please join me in congratulating senior mechanic Mark Olson on his retirement after fifteen years of service. We wish you a long, healthy, and happy retirement.
It's been a great place to work and I always, you know, always bring a life move to work because I always wanted to come to work and that makes it easy. So, thank you.
Friendship Center Director Malia Fox retired on April first, two thousand and twenty-two after twenty-seven years of service. Malia began employment with the city on August first, nineteen ninety-four, and revolutionized the Friendship Center during her tenure. Malia's a visionary. She can always see future potential. When she sets her mind to expanding opportunities for older adults, very little will stop her. Malia's always maintained the mantra that age should never limit a person from learning and experiencing new things. I could provide endless examples of her work, but focus on five very significant examples tonight. In two thousand and fourteen, she developed and implemented the Friendships Forever that allows homebound members to virtually participate in programming. Malia's team and many members were actively using Zoom and other digital connections long before two thousand and twenty pandemic. In two thousand and sixteen, Malia started the Dementia Friendly Community Initiative to develop training outreach opportunities and support services. One specific dementia program is the Forget Me Notes Choir. Two thousand and nineteen, she developed the Masters in Aging Program that teaches older adults to film and produce short documentaries about members in the Winona community. The Masters in Aging Series was shown at the Frozenberg Film Festival, can also be viewed on HBC local cable channel. In two thousand and twenty, Malia developed the Chore Core Program, which coordinates volunteers to assist Friendship Center members with yard work for the purpose of helping older adults to live in their own home for as long as possible. And certainly not, but not, or certainly last but not least, in two thousand and fifteen and two thousand and twenty, Malia worked diligently with staff and community members to obtain accreditation from the National Council on Aging for the Winona Friendship Center. Today, the Friendship Center is the only senior center with national accreditation in the state of Minnesota. Malia has also received several personal awards for her work from WSU and the Elder Network. Malia's been an exceptional leader within the Parks and Recreation Division. I greatly appreciate her direct communication and professionalism when bringing forward new ideas, discussing the future of the Friendship Center, and preparing the center for handoff prior to her retirement. From the entire Winona community, please join me in congratulating Friendship Center Director Malia Fox on her retirement after twenty-seven years of service. We wish you a long, healthy, and happy refirement. If you don't know, Malia strongly encourages those that retire not to retire, but to re-fire. So, congratulations.
My work is done. Thank you so much. It has also, I agree, been a wonderful thing. I've told this story before, but when I was working at my Watkins Home, Vern Smelzer, who was Park Recreation Director, was being paired for at the Watkins Home. And the day that I received notice that I would become the director of the senior center, I ran into his room and I told him and he said, "Honey, you got yourself a good job." I've always kept that with me and he was extremely wise. So, I got myself a good job and it was wonderful to be a part of Park Recreation. Working with all of you, thank you both so much. We have been great payments. That's all I wanted to do. So, thank you.
Park Maintenance Superintendent Marty Mullen retired on June third, two thousand and twenty-two after thirty-five years of service. Marty started as a temporary employee in the Park Maintenance Division in nineteen eighty-six and was hired as a full-time employee in January nineteen eighty-seven. His work ethic and dedication to the beautification of our park system was recognized. He was informed in May of two thousand and sixteen that he would have the opportunity to apply to be the next Park Maintenance Superintendent. But needed to obtain his general education degree first in order to meet the minimum requirement for the position. And I'll have more on that in a moment. Marty has always set the bar high for his team. He's a natural leader with an even balance of clear work expectations and calm demeanor. Marty has a soft-spoken yet commanding presence. Never seen him get upset, even if he might be internally, he never shows it. Instead, he uses his energy to solve the problem and move forward. He is always learning and encouraging others to do things better to avoid reoccurring issues. Marty has seen a tremendous amount of growth and responsibility for maintaining the park system since he was hired as a superintendent, including the addition of the Bud King Ice Arena, Levy Park, the area underneath the interstate bridge, Sobieski Park Lodge, numerous playground upgrades, and several ballfield upgrades. I say nine times out of ten, when I would ask Marty to do work on a new project, he would say yes. If he said no that one time, I knew it was a bad idea. His practicality and deep understanding of the inner workings of the park system will be missed. It's easy for me to say that despite of, despite all of Marty's excellent work in the park system, I'm most proud of Marty for completing his GED. Following the completion of his GED, Marty was promoted to Park Superintendent on December third, two thousand and sixteen. He is one of the smartest individuals I know. On behalf of the entire city staff and Winona community, please join me in congratulating Park Maintenance Superintendent Marty Mullen on his retirement after thirty-five years of service. We wish you a long, healthy, and happy retirement.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Really do appreciate it.
Thanks, everybody. It's been a great career. Thanks, Steve. Thanks, Chad.
Mayor and council, we have Representative Tim Penney here from Smith. And he has a presentation to the council before we begin with the regular business.
Thank you, city manager, mayor, honorary mayor, members of the council. Thanks for the opportunity to give you an update on the work of the Southern Minnesota Initiative Foundation. And it's great to be here in person after a couple of years of remote meetings. And thank you as well for the ongoing support from the city for the work of our foundation. We raise about ten percent of our budget annually from local donations, cities, counties, banks, businesses, individuals. But it's important to us to have that local support. It represents partnership as we invest in the economic future of this region. I also want to congratulate City of Winona on the Main Street Revitalization Grant. We're excited about the projects that will flow forward because of those dollars, which have to be matched locally. But it's an investment by the state in the vitality of communities across our region. And in addition to Winona, Rochester, Faribault, Mankato got those grants. And on behalf of two communities that approached us to be the fiscal agent for grant dollars, our foundation also received a grant to help Northfield replace, actually replace the old Archer House, the historic Archer House property in downtown Northfield. And then Blooming Prairie approached us about a project that will be focused on daycare and before and school, before and after-school care for their community. So, those are state dollars that will do a lot of good here in our part of the state. You know, in my years in politics, I don't give the same speech in five, fifteen, and fifty-minute increments. I'm shooting for five right here. But I do want to remind you that our foundation has been around for thirty-five years. We came into existence during the farm crisis to invest in the economic future in this region. Everything we do, we try to do as best we can in collaboration and partnership with other groups that are working on these same issues. And we work in three basic areas. We invest heavily, a couple million a year in early childhood initiatives. I won't go into detail what all of those are, but it's important, not only for current workers, to have quality care for their children, but it's a long-term investment on the future workforce. Because if these kids don't come to kindergarten ready to learn, they often never catch up. And that's a challenge for our society. It's a challenge for them and their lives. We invest quite a bit in entrepreneurship, probably twenty-five, thirty, business startup, early-stage business loans, six, seven, eight gap funding loans in partnership with EDAs and banks and others, as well as a small equity fund. We currently have sixteen equity investments in businesses that are sprouting and growing here in our part of the state. And then we do some small-town work. Winona is one of a dozen larger towns in our region, so that programming wouldn't necessarily apply for you. But certainly, we make a lot of investments in both the early child and entrepreneur space here in your community. There is a packet that I handed out before the meeting began. You can look at that at your leisure. There's our annual report. There's a program brochure in there. There's a one-page overview, kind of a high-level overview of some of our more recent work in Winona County and a few other items that you can look at at your leisure. In the early childhood space, I just want to mention that when COVID hit, we quickly moved to provide grants to childcare providers across our region. Over five hundred providers, twenty-nine here in your town, got those grants in order to make the adjustments they needed to make due to those COVID challenges. We also, last year, provided about twenty thousand dollars worth of books to the Lewiston Schools, the St. Charles Schools, St. Matthews Community Preschool, as well as the Winona Schools and the Winona Public Library. This year, we did a grant of about eleven thousand dollars worth of books to the St. Charles Public Schools. We also did an early childhood wraparound grant to the St. Charles School District. So, I always say that communities aren't islands unto themselves. They were part of a larger economy and so investments, even though they may not be directly here in Winona, certainly affect and benefit this community as well as the neighboring communities. We also had a number of individuals from Winona participate in our annual early childhood provider training programs. We do this at no cost, either on weekends or in the evening. We have a hybrid and remote option for those trainings. We get literally hundreds of childcare providers to take these trainings every year, including a number in your community, to help them at no cost again to themselves to get the continuing ed credits they need to stay in business, but also to be the best they can in the care that they're providing to the children in their facilities. And for many, many years, we've had an AmeriCorps partnership with this national public service program. And two of those AmeriCorps workers have been in your county, one at the monastery facility and the other at Head Start. And that has been an ongoing commitment, but they essentially become teachers' aides to work with the children and have the greatest challenges. So, that's an investment that's directly beneficial here in your city. In the entrepreneurial space, in addition to partnering on some lending programs like the Gypsum facility that's here, Gypsum facility that's here in town, as well as the Food Co-op, we have also partnered on a number of other economic development projects over the years. But here again, during COVID, the state with federal dollars asked our foundation if we could help distribute those dollars here in this corner of the state, because we have the bandwidth to do it. We've got the skill set to do it. And so, last year, we distributed about ten million dollars worth of recovery grants to roughly a thousand businesses here in southern Minnesota. Eighty-seven of those here in Winona County alone. This year, we're in the process of distributing roughly another ten thousand grants to businesses across our region totaling again about ten million dollars. All of these are businesses that can document losses that they incurred during the COVID restrictions and shutdowns. And so, here again, we're able to play that role on behalf of the state to get those dollars where they are needed. I also wanted to mention that we do a lot of local foods work in the region. And here in the county, there are a number of local food producers and processors that participate in our training programs, participate in our meetup with institutional buyers like restaurants and grocery stores, and also participate each year in our annual local foods festival, which is held at Rochester Civic Center during the holiday season in the November, December timeframe. So, I won't go into our small-town programming, but I did want to highlight to some extent some of the entrepreneurial and early childhood work that we have done that has brought benefit to your city and your county, among the other nineteen counties that we serve through our foundation's work. And with that, I think I stayed pretty close to my five-minute self-imposed deadline and happy to answer any questions you might have. But I thank you again for the support the city has provided our foundation through the years.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Penny. George?
Oh, yeah. Tim, I'd just like to, having had a chance to thank you publicly, but thank you for your help in helping us get the Sobieski Lodge Park building built. We were down there one evening and thank you for your support, your personal support for the project as well too. It's a very, very nice building and we'll have to get you down there sometime.
Yeah, well, I'll be able to check it out tonight. But I'm glad that went forward and I'm very excited for you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. I'll now ask the city clerk to take roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Here.
Councilmember Young.
Here.
Here.
Alexander.
Here.
Idan.
Here.
Borzakowski.
Here.
Rapinski.
Here. Do you want to read that first?
Under the required public hearings, item two point one is to propose twenty-twenty-two sidewalk replacement project and preliminary assessment rule.
For the public hearing, staff will make a short presentation. Then I'll ask if anyone from the public wishes to speak to the matter. You must clearly state your name and address and you will be given up to three minutes to make your testimony. I will call three times for public comments. Once the hearing is closed, the public may not participate in any discussion by city council. Yeah, Ryan from Engineering.
Good evening. This is just our yearly sidewalk replacement project. This year, we are looking at the section of Franklin and Chestnut Streets. From the city's portion, we'll be doing, I believe, eight curb ramps as well as curb kind of throughout the city. And then on the accessible portion, we have one hundred and three properties. For that, we're looking at sidewalk that's pushed apart a half inch, raised or lowered a half inch, as those are considered trippers by ADA requirements. So, those would be on the homeowners to have replaced or replace as part of this project. So.
Thank you, Ryan. I will now open the public hearing regarding the proposed twenty-twenty-two sidewalk replacement project and preliminary- in preliminary assessment role. Does anybody from the public wish to speak on the matter? Would anybody from the public wish to speak regarding the proposed sidewalk replacement project? Would anybody from the public wish to speak regarding the proposed 2022 sidewalk replacement project and preliminary assessment role? Hearing no one, the public hearing is closed.
I'd make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Eileen. Any questions? Go ahead.
Ryan, can I assume that this list is so much longer because like me, they had problems finding contractors that could do the work on small little patches?
I am assuming so, yeah. We've got quite a few calls of people recommending a contractor because they couldn't get in touch with anybody, so.
Okay, I assume that's what it was, not that we were doing more, but that they couldn't find people to do the small.
Yep, our permits were way down for it this year.
Thanks.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments? Ryan, how do we dictate what area we're going to work on each year?
Basically, we just have the city split west to east in 12 sections. We just move all the way east. And then, once we hit the far east section, then we just jump back to the west and start the whole thing over again.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Pam.
I, I have a kind of a technical question about the sidewalk replacement, especially when trees grow up and push the, push the sidewalk up a little bit. Sometimes it looks like there's really not that much of an, not that much of an edge. Has the city ever allowed people to just grind off that, that tripping edge and maybe smooth it out a little bit instead of replacing the whole thing?
Right. I don't know if we ever have. At this point, we don't, though. At this point, it's replacement or in that, some of those cases, we would allow muckjacking as well to just lift that panel up. But grinding, we do not allow.
Okay, so, and that is because, why?
Well, a couple of reasons. If we start grinding too much, we're going to end up with maybe very little sidewalk left. And also, if we start grinding, then we're kind of cutting into that rock and that cement. And then in the Midwest, we get sand and salt in the winter and that'll go into the concrete and then it'll start eating that away.
Okay, techni- technical, technical situations. But it would be, it seems like it would be a lot cheaper for people than.
It would be, it would just be, the sidewalk would probably need to be replaced on before too long anyways.
Thank you, Ryan.
I, I, actually, I do remember one question I had. How do we determine whether it's three or four inches? Is that just based on what's existing there already?
Uh, yeah, basically, everything would be four inch. We do have six inch in front of like driveways where we'd see some light vehicle traffic. And then we have eight inches wall in front of like an alley entrance where we would see heavier traffic.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. For the remainder of this meeting, the public is not allowed to speak unless you have a request before council, and I have given you permission to speak.
Under the petitions, requests and communications, item 3.1 is the Club Line and Off Sale Liquor License Renewals for 2022. This also includes on-sale taproom and the off-sale taproom malt liquor license. I would note there are four licenses that did not yet submit the required liquor liability insurance, that is discount liquor, Midtown Wine and Spirits, Rosas Liquor and Rivers Hotel doing business as the Fairfield Marriott Hotel.
I'd make a motion to approve the licenses minus the four until they submit required documents.
Second.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Eileen. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item 3.2 is a license agreement for the Boats and Bluegrass Event to be held September 19th through the 26th. Make a motion to approve the license agreement.
Second.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Eileen. Any discussion? We do have Isaac here, if anybody has any questions for him. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item 3.4 is a request for off-site gambling permit for the Winona Eagles Club.
I'd make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Second. We have a motion from Michelle, a second from George, and that was item 3.3.
Yes.
You said 3.4.
I just wanted to make.
Not a big deal, just so it's on record. So a motion from Michelle, second from George, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
And now item 3.4 is the Heritage Preservation Commission 2023 Preservation Goals, Objectives and Budget.
Is there a report?
And it's just informational?
Did they want to? I think Lucy.
Second for the reception.
Lucy.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a report that the Heritage Preservation Commission prepares every year to submit to council. And part of it is they are selecting a project to work on to be included in the budget. So they're proposing a grant of $8,000 to be matched by 2,000 of city dollars. And the project this year is to provide some guidelines for homeowners who have historic homes. We have that for historic downtown buildings, but we don't have a guide for a homeowner who might want to learn more about how to properly rehabilitate their home.
Any questions for Lucy? No? Thank you, Lucy. Appreciate it.
No action required.
Moving on to unfinished business, item 4.1 is the Community Center-Public Safety Building Project Timeline.
Make a motion to set the public hearing for July 5th and direct staff to establish an online public input form prior to June 17th.
I'll second that. We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Erin. Any discussion?
Mayor.
Please.
Um, I'm wondering if we might be able to set the public hearing for the meeting following the July 5th meeting. I'm concerned that because it falls right on a holiday weekend, that we may miss a large swath of the population. So can I make a motion to set it for the following meeting? I don't know what that date is.
18th.
18th. Like to make a motion to change the date to July 18th.
Do we have a second?
I'd second that.
Okay, we have a motion from Eileen, a second from Pam. Any discussion, George?
Yeah, Chad, City Manager, can you explain, there's going to be a series of meetings coming up, correct? If you can explain what, what the process is from here going forth, outside of this one here that is scheduled, that'll be either for the 18th or the 5th.
So Mayor and Council, that's correct. So based on the City Council meeting on the 16th, you direct the staff to come back with a plan for public input. So we would set a public hearing, much like you saw tonight with the sidewalk project, where the community could come and give input regarding the project. We did want to also establish an online public input. And we, we set a date because we think that obviously that establishment is not difficult to achieve. We've used similar online formats for the comprehensive plan update. And then we did add that we would establish future public input sessions. And we would bring those back to council, much like we have tonight, or establish those and then give the community those timelines and, and appropriate dates. So like a, like a public hearing, we require this, this action so that we can set that public hearing date. And we, we talked about focus areas of input. And we've heard that from the community so far, and I've heard it from some council members that we'd like to have focused input, perhaps at the East Recreation Center, at the Friendship Center, for example. It's been discussed about having different locations throughout the community, including here in the chambers as well for additional public input sessions. We've had some discussions at this table about whether or not we should have outside facilitation for those public input sessions for the public hearing that we're suggesting either July 5th or the 18th. We would not do that. We would set it up, just like we, like I said before with the sidewalk. I think future is still to be determined. And I would recommend that we don't hire an outside facilitator until we know more about the project. And I say more about the project. As we alluded to at the May 16th meeting, we would be in negotiations with the St. Mary's, or St. Stan's, sorry, St. Stan's Parish. And if we can't come to terms with the purchase of that property, then of course, the project likely changes. And so I think that there's some steps in receiving the public input. We did, though, want to gather the general public input on this project as early as possible. So we had some conflict dates for the next meeting in June. We went to the, to the July 5th, certainly could be July 18th as well. And that's really the timeline and framework for how this recommendation came forward.
Let's start, Steve.
It does, moving this to the July 18th date, does that, does that affect our timeline? Hinder it in any way?
Mayor and Council, I don't see it hindering in any way. I mean, I believe our first meeting with St. Stan's Parish is not until the end of June. So I think that this is well within an appropriate timeline.
The only reason I, I would, I mean, I only got one email asking us to move it. And I can't think of any time during the summer where we might bump up against someone that's going to be gone and want to be here. So what I would say is, I know that this group of people has been asking us for months, even before the May 17th meeting, to have a, a meeting where they can give us input. And it's, it's putting off a little longer. Anyone has the opportunity to send an email or a formal letter to Monica to make it part of the permanent record. But I want to keep moving forward. And every two weeks, we wait longer to do it. We, we start to kind of drag behind, and these people really want to talk in front of the whole council. So my, my pushback is not because, I mean, I'm planning to be here on the 5th, even though it's a holiday weekend. But there are other weekends in the month or during the week where families will be gone. It is when people travel. And so I don't, I mean, I don't really want to schedule the public input session based solely on July 5th. I want to be sensitive to the people that have asked to speak for us for, for months. So although I personally have no objection, if that's the way the vote goes to going to the 18th, I just, the only reason I think the 5th was presented this way is because we were trying to address that need of the public as quickly as possible. So I guess I don't care, but I do think we have plenty of opportunities for people to present their information that is not in any way the only public input we will take, nor the only public hearing, nor the only opportunity to make your feelings about this project known. And we would have those letters, I assume, as part of our packet, as normally is when people submit them when they can't be here. So it's, it's not like the input letters wouldn't be part of the public record or be read by all of us. So I'd still like to do it on the 5th, but I'm not, I'm like, I'm not angsty about it. I just, I would, I'd like to give these people a chance to speak.
Thank you, Michelle. Erin.
Mayor, too, I've, I've been contacted on both ends of that, where the email that asked to put it out. Also, people ask as soon as possible. We've had people attend meetings that want to talk, they haven't had the opportunity. I agree that we should have them as soon as possible. That's how I feel on it. If, if someone's, most people are going to work on Tuesday, July 5th, anyway. So it's really not a different day. Yeah, it's a day that follows after the holiday weekend, but people aren't getting off Tuesday for, for the holiday weekend. We're not, so I'm assuming most people aren't.
Sure. Any other comments, discussion? So currently, the motion is for July 18th from Eileen and seconded by Pam. Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Aye.
No.
I mean, no.
Can we do a?
Nay.
Raise your hands for aye.
Aye. And for opposed, so we're staying with July 5th.
We have to vote.
Amendment fails.
Okay, so the motion fails.
So then the main motion.
Okay, we'll go back to the main motion, which was?
The original date, July 5th.
Yep, made by you, Michelle, right? And seconded by George or by Erin? Okay, very good. Any discussion on this one? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No. Pam, you're no?
No, it's, I'll go with the 5th.
You're good with the 5th, okay. Motion passes.
Then moving on to new business, item 5.1 is the presentation of the 2021 City Financial Reports.
We have Jessica, the Finance Director.
Mayor and Council, tonight we have with us Judy Dackendorf from Deloitte and Touche to go over the financial reports. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Judy Dackendorf, Managing Director from Deloitte and Touche. Here, in the pre-council meeting, we had a chance to go through our required presentation and discussion items related to the 2021 financial statements of the city. We are prepared to issue unmodified opinions on the governmental activities, business-type activities, each major fund, discreetly presented component unit, and the aggregate remaining fund information of the city. And you have copies of those financial statements. Additionally, in 2021, the city did not meet the requirements for requiring a single audit of federal expenditures. So that audit was not completed. I'd be happy to answer any questions that still remain from our presentation earlier.
Any questions? No?
I'd make a motion to approve for publishing the CAFER.
Second.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Eileen. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate everyone's help.
Appreciate it.
Item 5.2 is the presentation for the award for financial reporting. No action is required. I think you did that at the beginning.
I did, yep. All right.
Okay, good job.
Good job.
Good job, Brad.
Item 5.3 is the DNREAB Urban Forest Grant Acceptance. Make a motion to approve the agreement.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Pam. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item 7.1 is council concerns.
Matthew, which side of the council table would you like to start with?
Left.
Okay, we will start with Councilmember Young.
All right, thank you very much. I, will I see you at Tryonah on Sunday?
Yeah.
Yeah, all right, good. You know, swim, bike and run. Awesome, cool, can't wait. It's going to be rough for you to beat me in the swim, but you'll clean my clock and everything else. Heard, heard mentioned in our meeting tonight about census numbers. And I, I was, I, I saw those. I think that was the first time I actually saw that number. We've talked about it before a couple of times here. I'm wondering if we can get an update either now or, or some other time where we're at in our, our dispute with, with, with the census. It's, it's just so important, so.
Just real briefly, Mayor and Council, I'll bring back information at the next council meeting because we did receive an update on where that prog, where that process is at for the dispute. So I'll bring that to the next council meeting during my comments.
Good, thanks. So.
Very good. Councilmember Muller.
I have a question about some onsite liquor sales that might be allowed from an omnibus bill that just passed in the state legislature for local breweries to be able to sell Growlers, I believe, more than they do? Six-packs, excuse me. And I just, I know that we have some businesses wondering about those expanded business opportunities and what certification they need from us, from, from the city in order to kickstart that process.
I think there's probably some users that are also.
And also some users who are very keen.
We'll call them patrons, patrons.
Yes.
Patrons, yeah.
Patrons.
Yep.
Supporters of small businesses.
There you go.
Thank you. And then it's June, so it's my annual Happy Pride Month from my fellow LGBTQ folks. There's a lot of activities going on this month. And just want to remind folks that this, that myself and other community members are doing the best we can to make this a safe and welcoming community. So, yeah, happy pride, that's all.
Thank you, Eileen. Councilmember Muller or Alexander.
For June, I also say there's a lot of wonderful city activities from Tryonah to Steamboat Days. I got my button on, I'm ready for the 75th anniversary. We have Strawberry Fest, there's music, there's car shows. So get out and enjoy yourself and be patient because. So get out and enjoy yourself and be patient because roads are closed and slow. And we have lots of improvements happening, which makes it a little bit of a struggle. So just be patient with each other and remember that you're going someplace fun where you might be a patron of something delicious. And that can maybe take some stress out of the, the, the next couple of months.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Aiden?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Rupinski?
Thank you, Mayor. I do want to bring attention to speeds at Broadway again. I've had a few individuals contact me about people going excessively quick in Broadway. Maybe it's trying to bypass Mankato and get to the other side of town. So if we could address our police department and maybe have them patrol that more or crack down even a little bit more, I'd greatly appreciate that. Also, it's been brought to my attention again by the Hamilton Street Crossing. Probably by a number of individuals have contacted me. I'm assuming they're bypassing Mankato. So they're taking a left off of Sarnia and the Hamilton. And I know the train tracks are pretty rough there. I happen to frequent one of our establishments locally, Lakeview Drive-In. And I'm on Hamilton quite a bit. And I know we've talked about that in the past, that I think with the new train coming, they're looking at, at possibly upgrading that tracks. I don't know if there's something we can do in the meantime, or if we have some sort of timeline from them. Boy, but I would really appreciate if I could get some kind of date or, you know, a planned notification of, so I can answer those people back and say, this is why it's taking so long, or this is our solution to that problem. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Borzakowski?
Thank you, Erin. For the engineer, I have some questions on Broadway. People are asking about the crosswalks, the intersections that they're redoing. And there's a sliver in there that's going to be grass. They're saying, why is this not all concrete? I understand there's some federal regulations because of this, but you would know more on that.
Yep, so we looked into that. Unfortunately, we have to do it as grass because of the steepness of that corner. If we have it as grass, it's considered non-walkable surface, and then that steepness can go up to, I believe, twenty percent. I'm not sure on that number, but somewhere around that. If we put in concrete, it's considered walkable surface, and then that steepness or that grade can only go up to a ten percent. And everything that we're putting in is above that ten percent grade, so we have to put grass in just to meet federal requirements.
Okay, thank you on that, so.
Wait, Ryan, can I ask a question off your question? Can they decide to do landscaping, like plantings or something? I think probably some of this is coming from mowing. This little sliver of grass, can they, can they plant it? Can they make it?
They, I believe they can put plants in. It has to be under a certain height. I don't know what that number is, but it has to be under two feet, three feet, whatever it is, but they, they could put plantings in there, yes.
So they have some options.
Yep.
Okay, good, good. Right, thank you. Also, I'd just like to simply thank the folks who are traveling the Mankato Avenue, Highway forty-three corridor for your patience. During busy hours, yes, there's backup, but it's moving along. And when the project is done, it's going to be well worth it. But I just want to thank everyone for their patience and for more of the patients to come as we go through the summer. And also a thank you to Hope Harbor, which I read in the paper today, where they have taken treats down to the Mankato Avenue construction workers. So that was very, very nice of them and to help kind of soothe the situation down. I'm sure they are under a lot of stress as well as the drivers because they're working in a very confined area with some very, very big equipment. As I used to say, that when you see a backhoe, a front-end loader, a crane, a dump truck, it's progress. It's, it's progress, and that's, that's the way we get things done, so. But thank you all for your patience, and as that continues to go forth, the project will be well worth it when it's completed, so. And you're even working in bad weather. I mean, it was pouring rain that day, and that equipment was running, so. Thank you.
Thank you, George.
Moving on to the consent agenda, there are two items. Approval of the minutes from May sixteenth and an ordinance to repeal the Fine Arts Commission.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion from Michelle, a second from Eileen. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
The time being seven twenty-four and there being no further business to come before the council this evening, I move we adjourn.
Second.
Motion from Michelle.
Eileen beat me to it.
A second from Eileen. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.